All right, so the first thing we're gonna do tonight is a point of clerk pro tem. And since we don't have clerk it, I'll read the recommended action. Be it resolved that in the absence of clerk, the Board of Education hereby appoints Maggie Valentine, Board Vice President to serve as the clerk pro tem for this meeting. May I have a motion please?
So moved, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so now I'm gonna call the moving to order. So this is the Tuesday, May 20th, 2025, Haldane Board of Education. Please stand for the pledge of belief. Here. Vice President Valentine. Trusty Clemmons.
Here.
Clemmons, sorry, Clemmons, I always mess this up. I did it last year too. Trusty McNally.
Here.
And Trusty Cupper.
Here.
Um, I don't believe we have any changes for the agenda. So may we have the recommended action for the approval of the agenda. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the Intern Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the agenda as written. May I have a motion please?
So moved, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Um, so our next meeting will be on Tuesday, my gosh, June 3rd at 7 o'clock. That'll be a business meeting here at the middle school, high school library. And we're gonna have a special presentation from Highland Electric Leaks. Advising on the electric platform.
Yes.
Yes, great. Um, so the, I think the only other thing I'll say is that we're certainly in the thick of end of year activities with senior nights for spring sports. Uh, I got to go to the middle school and elementary school concerts last week, which was really fun. There's, I think, 15 events happening on Wednesday. That's gonna have people different places. Um, I'm looking forward to going to the valedictorian salutatorian dinner with Mr. Albano and Tom Cunningham and the valedictorian and the salutatorian as part of the Lower Hudson Regional Education Council. That's really neat event. You just see how big our area is and all these great kids. Um, uh, there was the end of year art show tonight sponsored in part, I think, by the PTA, which I took a look at it, it's really ugly. So anyway, lots going on. Um, that's really all I have.
Sure, I just have a few brief updates. Um, yes, Highland Electric will be here at our next meeting, which is exciting. Um, but an update from, from the state, New York State did add an additional $100 million to support the transition to electric buses. So as you may recall, we, we have an EPA grant application in for four electric buses. It would cover about 50% of the cost of a bus. But then New York State funding would cover maybe an additional 40%, which would give us about 90% coverage if we receive both grants. If the EPA grant falls through and we, we have no news, I check it pretty much every day or every other day at least. Um, but if, if it falls through, it, this is promising that the state has increased their, their budget line. So, uh, there is more support and that may be an alternate route for us if we don't receive EPA grant money. So, um, Adam and I, uh, right on cue, are meeting with Highland Electric tomorrow. And we'll be going through some of this and, and reviewing, um, you know, some of the infrastructure plans. And we do believe this is something that we're, you know, is very doable for Haldane. Um, you know, it may take a few years, um, but we're certainly, we've taken the first important steps. So if you have questions, you know, definitely bring them next week. And Highland Electric, uh, does consult for many, many districts in the region. So, uh, they're, they've been wonderful. They've been very knowledgeable. Next, I just wanna recognize, um, as part of our capital project planning, uh, we have a stakeholder team dedicated to the STEAM labs, the one here at the middle school and the new one that will be built in the high school. So I just wanna recognize the effort of, of our high school principal Julia Sniffin, our elementary principal Christine Jamin, middle school principal Mary Ann Silky, Josh Elder, Simon Duder, Mark Patinella, Gabe Horn, and Megan Shields. Um, this group has done numerous visits. They went to Chappaqua several times. They went up to Marlborough and Regina Kation is also participating in the STEAM stakeholder committee. And I was really impressed, our, our most recent meeting with CSR. I mean, we're really getting down to the details, things like dust collection systems and, you know, where the, the power equipment will be placed and technology and screens. And it's very exciting to see this. Uh, we do have a board presentation, the renderings for the interior of the STEAM labs should be completed. And you should see them at the second June meeting, I believe it's June 17th. But again, this group has put in many, many hours, you know, longer beyond the school hours, given up lunches and prep periods. And I just thought all of them deserved some recognition. And, and I have to say, it's very exciting. And I do plan, I hope I'm invited back in, in two or three years to, to, to see these and, and walk through this exciting project because I must say it really is something special. Um, lastly, uh, earlier this afternoon, Maggie, Julia and I met with Supervisor Van Tassel and also Mayor Foley and representatives from the Highland, uh, Hudson Highland Fjord Trail, um, the CEO as well as his team. And I thought it was a very productive dialogue. There were some concerns around the closure at Breakneck Ridge and some parking lots that have been closed in, in our, in our area. And the concern that we had as a school district is, you know, people may seek parking on, on school campus. And of course during school hours, um, that presents a safety issue. Uh, we are closed campus to, to outside people. And, you know, on weekends, that may be something that the board has to consider in the future, whether or not, you know, we wanna set policy and have signage where parking is not allowed or permitted even on the weekend. We do have a lot of school activities on weekends. So I think the policy committee will take a closer look at that. But for me, this, this meeting was a very productive meeting because you had your village, your town, your school district, which all, you know, in some ways may be impacted as this project moves forward. There's gonna be various stages of the project. And I think it's really important to keep that open dialogue. So, um, it was productive. We, we, the outcome of today was that we, we identified places where signage will be very helpful. So even, you know, um, at the village level to have signs before people even enter, uh, you know, the school, the school, um, entryways, which are not really school streets. They, they are public streets. So to get signage and, and make it clear that during school hours, you know, through traffic is not permitted and parking certainly is not permitted. With that, I would just ask Maggie or Julia if I missed anything. I, I, you think it's a pretty good summary?
Yep.
And they've agreed to have ongoing meetings, which, which I think is the most important thing because, you know, new things will come up and present themselves. And just having a healthy, open dialogue, I think is very good.
Actually, if I could add one more thing, it's not just the parking, right? It was, it's people who may sort of walk down toward campus as well, right? So just the whole idea of, of safety for the, for the kids during the school day. Um, cause I think that was the incident, right? It was actually people, they were in a car, but there's have been people wandering down from the back of, um, you know, CMLA, so.
Yes, yeah. So, you know, again, I, I think, so I, I think we're getting together in like in two weeks, finalize some of that signage. And then they agree, you know, to meet on an ongoing basis, you know, as needed. So I, I think that was very productive.
That's great.
Okay.
And I appreciate that. Supervisor Van Tassel and Mayor Foley also joined because I know their, um, concern. I mean, you know, really it's a, a real partnership to, to, um, uh, and, and I think, you know, I think the Fjord Trail also is certainly wants to keep the campus safe. And so that, that's a great partnership. Thanks for that update.
True, my pleasure.
All right, so since this is a workshop meeting, um, it is our, um, honor to get to welcome, uh, some student advisors to give us a presentation uh, about some of the things that are going on at the high school. And so as I understand it, we now have Asling Stathos and Mrs. Ellison to give a presentation. So if you would mind, please come in up here. We'd appreciate it.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm Ashlyn Stathos. I'm freshman class president, Kira Halden. Um, firstly, I would like, I'd like to take a moment to thank Mr. Cunningham, our athletic director for his support and coordination of merger sports programs like the North Island Ice Hockey Team, which I'm a part of. Um, these programs allow student athletes from the smaller spaces to participate in sports that are as possible. Being able to compete at the varsity level in this sport where hockey requires strong collaboration between districts. And it's thanks to leadership like Mr. Cunningham that opportunities like this exist. Mergers teams expand access, promote equality in athletics, and allow students to represent their school communities in meaningful ways. I'd also like to take a moment to recognize someone who has made a huge difference in my life and the lives of so many other students, Ms. Michelle Cordero. She was recently named the Westchester Putnam Social Studies Teacher of the Year, and anyone who's ever been in her class knows exactly why. Ms. Cordero makes history come alive. She challenges us to think critically, encourages discussion, and always supports us inside and outside of the classroom. She's the kind of teacher who believes in her students and pushes us to be our best. I can't think of anyone more deserving of this award. And I'm proud to be one of her students. Thank you for your time.
Hello, members of the board. On the 1st of May this year, Halden held its annual school spring concert. This concert featured the Halden Chorus Wind Ensemble and Jazz Band performing a variety of musical pieces. I greatly enjoyed performing in both the Halden Jazz Band and the Halden Wind Ensemble. Events like these are a great example of how performing arts can bring students, families, and the entire community together. This concert would not have been possible without the hard work and dedication of Jessica Stein, Sam Sauer, Christian Ullin, and Dan Marori. Overall, being a part of both ensembles helped me grow as a musician and become more confident performing a variety of, of musical genres. Also, the school year is coming to an end. This also means that the New York State Regents exams are approaching. Students, including myself, are preparing for these tests in subjects such as geometry and earth science. In class, we've been using geometry and earth science regions for reading books. While these examinations do bring stress and pressure to many students, using class and personal time to repeat for testing reduces stress and brings more confidence as the exams come closer. With extra preparedness and the support of our teachers, I feel much more ready for these exams. Thank you.
Any more specific questions? So actually, would you remind, so to remind me, what is the, uh, the board that, Ms., I don't wanna put you on the top. Ms. Cordero, right?
She won the Westchester Putnam County, um, Social Studies.
And, uh, yeah.
My, uh, a couple of days ago, my, my son has been playing the piano for, oh, about five years. A couple of days ago said, I never wanna play the piano again. What's the use of doing this? So I was just curious to know, like, if you had, give me some advice to get him about why you continue playing and how it's been a benefit to you.
Well, it benefits me because, um, you get to like meet new people who also enjoy playing instruments. And I think that's really, I think that's really great because you can learn about music more and you can also meet people who play other instruments too. And you get involved with more clubs and stuff like jazz band, which I really enjoy.
Great.
You're right. What was your favorite jazz band song you guys played this year?
I enjoyed Caravan because I'm familiar with the song and I think it's really fun.
Did you say what you played?
Oh, I play the, uh, B-Flatt clarinet.
Um, it's so great to hear about those sports mergers. And, and it's, you're totally right that Mr. Cunningham's office completely coordinates all of that. I will give the board a little bit of credit, uh, that the board a while ago really made the decision, uh, uh, because different sports, right? Like different numbers of students and there's different things involved with different sports. And I mean, I'll just point out that a number of years ago, the board made the decision to really sort of embrace all mergers regardless if it was one student. Cause I believe, like you said, you're the, the one girl from Halden. Yeah, the playing ice hockey, regardless of the number of students or, you know, what was involved, that it was something that the board, as long as we had the resources to do really, you know, really wanted to do. And it's, it's really nice to hear that it's, it means something to you. So thanks for sharing that.
And it's impressive that the board also, like, everyone can come together because I think there's 13 schools in my merger. So it's insane.
Well, yeah, but it's, you know, I mean, it's interesting, you know? I mean, the different sports, you know, and, you know, at one point, I mean, we've had a couple of boys on the hockey team, I think, pretty consistently for a while now. So it's great and I'm glad they're enjoying it.
Yeah, I think we have a total of three hockey players. Is that right? Three varsity hockey players?
I know of, um, one senior boy and two senior boys I know of. Are there any younger on the hockey merger?
Yeah, there's two, so.
Two thousand. There we go. Excellent.
Thank you both very much.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, all right, so now we're going to, um, have a special presentation, uh, a workshop presentation of special education. I mixed up my special presentation. You all, you all are welcome. I mean, you're welcome to stay, but you're also welcome to leave.
Yeah, thank you so much for taking that.
Uh, she said it, she had it all set. Is it, it's over?
Yeah, nothing negative.
Not like really all set.
Not just a little set, really set.
Um, so thank you.
It's okay for me to sit.
Yes, it's fine. Now I can like whisper to you. Um, thank you, Mr. Clemmons and Vice President, um, Valentine and Christine. And thank you, Mr. Albano and to the Haldane community for this opportunity. Cause it's actually nice to be able to, um, reflect on the work of the department and, and to kind of put together some of the work to be, to celebrate a little bit, some of the work that we've done. Um, but also reflect on some of the work that still needs to be done. So it's a, it's a good exercise. Um, so I'm gonna touch on a couple of things. And I did wanna invite my esteemed administrative colleagues to add in here and there because everything that the people personnel department does is highly interconnected to and dependent on, um, the work that's happening inside of our buildings and happening at the district level. Um, so I wanna make sure that they have the opportunity to add in because, you know, they're, they're experts in the work that's happening in their buildings. So I just wanted to state, say that right from the, from the jump. Um, I don't want you to feel like this is anything, um, like a filibuster. I'm not gonna talk until we postpone the vote. But, um, I did plan a few extra things just knowing we had a little time because typically we end up having to, you know, get through our presentations in 10 or 15 minutes. So, um, hopefully the board will feel like you can also ask questions as we go along. Um, so just to hear, um, in, in, at a glance of some of the department goals that we focused on. And the board will recall that a lot of these goals were, um, derived from broader district goals, but also from our PPS audit. And the audit came up with, you know, almost a dozen recommendations. But we decided to, you know, based on stakeholder input, we really zeroed in on the three that are listed there, which is trying to enhance our inclusive practices and our specialized instruction, um, enhancing the professional learning for all of our PPS faculty and staff in service of the first goal. Um, and then expanding our curriculum for special class students. Um, so these were derived basically from the audit. And there's a few examples down below that just highlight some of the work that we did in service of those goals. So we started working with GNR, which is a consultation group, um, that, that supports inclusive teaching. Um, it's through Putnam Northern Westchester BOCES. And this year we were able to start with the elementary school co-taught pairs. And, um, we decided on a coaching model rather than having the teachers leave the building and go off to BOCES because we have good teachers, we have solid teaching happening. But we wanted sort of on the site, on the job training. And so we went with the coaching model, starting with elementary. Our plan is to continually keep carrying over this work with GNR into next school year, including hopefully one of our professional learning days. At least part of the day will be dedicated to a K through 12 work on what is inclusive teaching? What are inclusive practices? Um, how do we partner with other educators? Because Halden is small, so there, almost everybody's going to be co-teaching at some time. And almost all of us will be working with related service providers pushing into our building, into our classrooms, you know, more so than ever before. Um, and there are many other examples. We've been partnering and I'll talk a little more later about the Hudson Valley Arburn Center, which is the, the, the regional board for expanding our understanding of multilingual, um, diverse cultures and learners and, and speakers of different languages. Um, and we're gonna hear a little bit more about how our, our population, our diversity is growing, which is a good thing, um, but we also need to grow with it. Um, some of the other things we did, for example, is that we got feedback that, um, our, our after-school heart program was maybe a little more intimidating for our middle schoolers to go to because it was up the hill in the high school and, and middle school students were reluctant to maybe go get help with high schoolers. And so I got feedback from our, um, our, um, Learning Differences Committee leader, um, Ms. Lagerman. And based on that feedback, we had, at work with Julia to create a classroom that was dedicated for middle school students looking for heart support. We also worked with Ms. Amato, our school counselor in the middle school, to walk them up there. So they were escorted up to a classroom where they could feel a little more comfortable with other middle schoolers getting help. So little things like that can make a very big difference in terms of being more inclusive. Um, and there are so many other examples. I wanted to highlight some of the work in action. And some of that includes, you know, we, we talked, we did some professional learning last year on universal design for learning. Uh, Josh Elder is working with, um, offering curriculum hours with the principals for this coming summer to continue that work where we embed some of the UDL principals into our, um, our already designed units and how we can design them and redo them better. But here's just, I always think it's just great to see it in action. This is a group of students that receive special education services. They're working with their teacher, Ms. Perron. And they did, um, hands-on, built their own volcano. They had to read through the directions. Part of this, you know, also met some of their IEP goals, which had to do with following multi-step directions and carry out this active, um, activity. And then they simulated the volcanic eruption and they were very proud of it. So when I asked people to send some pictures that celebrated some of the work they were proud of, uh, Ms. Perron shared this picture. Again, don't hesitate to ask questions. Um, part of the way that we become more inclusive is to build our own understanding of things we just don't know enough about. And so in service of that, during Autism Awareness Month, um, one of our special class teachers, Ms. Gordon, partnered with our speech and language pathologist, Teresa Harden. And they put together such an incredible opportunity. Um, it was a lesson in the fourth grade class, Ms. Hartford's class, about different types of communication. So they worked with, um, helping students understand why we communicate. It's not just to get things, it's to socially connect with other people. They talked about what it is to use communication to be a good friend. Um, and they talked about different ways that people communicate. And they got to actually play a game, that game Headband, where you have to use words, but you can't see. Um, they worked with, they trialed communicating using an AAC device, um, which some of our students in the building do use. Um, they use picture communications. So it was apparently extremely well received. The kids were open, they were curious, and they wanted to try it. So that's just an example of some of the things that we're trying to do to continue. The, you know, we need to continue to do this kind of work because I think there's so much we don't understand about, um, neurodivergence really. And so this was something that they were extremely proud of and rightfully so. Also, uh, an example of like interdisciplinary work. Um, we've also moved the needle in terms of how we're instructing literacy and how we're improving our specialized instruction. Or remember that last year, we ensured that pretty much all of our elementary special education teachers were trained in PAF, which is, um, stands for preventing academic failure, which is a terrible name. But it is a multisensory approach to teaching reading. And so this quote that, um, one of our special class teachers gave, um, Olivia Estralago, I thought was just, you know, uh, captured a lot. She, she said, "For the 24-25 school year, there have been three cohorts of special class reading in the elementary school." And that's an example of our expanded continuum. We didn't have that before. These classes have used PAF as their curriculum resource, which has been bolstered by the professional development opportunities revolving around the science of reading. And as you know, that work has been led by Mr. Elder, by Christine Jamin, and an entire team of literacy specialists. This has influenced me to include phonemic awareness as well as phonics skills into my reading instruction. And then she goes on to say that this multisensory approach to teaching reading has given the students the tools they need in their daily lives when faced with unfamiliar words. And that she's noticing that they've gained more competence and they're more eager to read than they were at the beginning of the school year. Um, so we measure success in so many different ways. But the idea that kids who didn't wanna read, were embarrassed to read, would do anything to avoid reading, are getting excited about reading is pretty special. It's also an example, you know, we really talk a lot about co-taught classes and how important it is for all the children to be together. But I still maintain that there are times where having children in a smaller group to really target specific needs has its benefits. Because some of these children might have otherwise been embarrassed to read in front of the bigger group. But in their group where they're all working together, um, it's, it can be very beneficial and very confidence building. I have a question about. Sure. So, so it mentions there have been three cohorts of special class reading. Are those kids typically from the same grade or do you do it more like? We pretty much have to do multiple, multiple ages together. Yeah. So we are, we try to ban them, not necessarily specific to their grade, but to what, with what level of PAF they're at when we can. Um, Christine Jamin has to like, I don't know, play Twister and stand on her head to make a schedule. Period for that, like a reading time for that to happen, right? Yeah. Which I don't, I don't think has historically been how things are scheduled. But anyway, that's great because I would think of the classes are so small and reading can really be all over the place that you would actually need to have multiple. Yeah. Great. That's interesting. And one of the things we're trying to do, and, and it looks like we're being able to pull off, is some of the feedback we got was the 45-minute block wasn't quite long enough for a PAF lesson. PAF lessons are rather robust, a lot of components. So again, Ms. Jamin has, I just tell her stuff like, we need this. And here's the criteria and she, she, she can often pull it off. And sometimes it takes a group, she pulls in this group of, uh, uh, additional sets of eyes who are primarily teachers who live the schedule and they can actually see some things that we don't see after staring at it for a while. Ben?
Yeah.
So this just kind of goes into the numbers a little bit. It's always kind of curious to know where we're at, how many students are classified. Um, I would say that we're pretty steady. You know, overall, our classification rate is fairly typical with other schools. According to our beds data, our classification rate for 23-24 was around, uh, 12 and a half percent. Um, that's, that's, that's a good place to be. I don't, I don't see it going down necessarily. Um, but it, it isn't a bad neighborhood. Um, in fact, it's almost identical, a couple of hundreds of point off from Garrison's classification rate. Um, it's a slightly lower than North Salem's. And we, I also looked at like, uh, Mayapack and Lakeland are much higher. So are cities like Yonkers, uh, but it, but it's, it's a pretty decent classification rate. And you'd be interested to know that some of the districts, some of the, um, I would just say traditionally, more financially, uh, well-off districts, some of their classification rates are lower. Part of it is that we see a correlation with socioeconomic status and whatnot. But also, and this has been changed for Halden a little bit too, as we talk more about developing a more robust, multi-tiered system of support. There are school districts who don't classify certain kids because they can handle their needs within their multi-tiered system. So for example, I know a school district of, you know, where a decent number of their children who have dyslexia, they have a built-in building level dyslexia program. And so any child could access it. They could access it for a period of time. They could access it for as long as they need. But, so there may be times where some classification rates look artificially low and, and sometimes that's the reason. Generally speaking, I don't think we're gonna see classification rates go down all that much, even if we, and, and we are improving our MTSS process. And that's partially because we're better at, we have better tools and we're better at diagnosing things like reading disabilities. Learning disabilities are usually the biggest category of students who are classified. And of learning disabilities, it is typically a reading disability. The other thing is that we know that, um, autism is being identified much more frequently. And there's, you know, different reasons for that. Some of it may be that maybe it's more prevalent, but there's also the idea that we're getting better at, um, identifying and what is autism. And, and we know that there's a extremely wide spectrum. Um, so I, I, you know, it'll be interesting to follow. But right now I would say that how So I, I, you know, it'll be interesting to follow, but right now I would say that Haldane's numbers are solid. Another interesting thing I just want to highlight is that we have students who are from other districts who are placed in private schools within our community, pretty much Manitou. Interestingly enough, their school is having more and more and more students who are coming with disabilities. And so um this year, we had seventeen different students who came from other districts, who had, you know, identified disability, who had the need for us to manage their CSE process. So we hold their meetings, we manage their testing, we, we're pretty involved. We go over and observe. I go over and observe. So that number was seventeen this year, which is almost doubled, or more than doubled since the previous year. So um it is interesting, right now, I, I don't, I don't know if the state's going to relook at their policy where it's the district of location rather than the district of residence that manages that. I have opinions about that, which I will not share tonight.
That was my question. Okay, so if you have a student who lives in Beacon who's going to Manitou, it's, it's policy right now that it's the district of where the school is.
Location, right. Well, what's so interesting then is that we don't necessarily know that student well.
Right.
And we're then making decisions about their special education services, and then we're billing the other district. So decisions we make, we hit, we hand them the bill. So it's, it's.
A lot of kids.
It is. In terms of our number of students um who are in preschool who are classified, well, just backing up for a second. This is a nice time to just talk about how exciting I think it is for Haldane to have their universal pre-K. I think it is going to be such a windfall for our students and our families. Not only is it right here at Haldane, um but we, we hear such great things about Garrison's UPK and how they just, they said that the children coming from their own UPK into their kindergarten are so much more ready, not just with academic skills, but with like social skills, how to be a little friend, how to be in a classroom. So that's exciting. I also think it's going to be better for our students with disabilities. A lot of children with disabilities in our pre-K program will be able to get their services right here. Not by us still, when they're preschool, it's still through the county. But it'll be easier for the county providers to come and deliver those services because it'll be more consolidated, rather than three or four or five different preschools scattered throughout Phillips Town. So I think that's going to be really beneficial too. And just the benefit of children being able to be together and learn together, I think, is, is really, um, really special. So I just wanted to highlight that. And I know Ms. Jamin has talked about our UPK more. The UPK curriculum is sort of closely dictated by the state, but it also includes some additional screening, and I think that's going to be beneficial too. So when the students come in, they have a full screening into UPK, and then they have the screening when they exit. And there's also some benchmarks and progress monitoring while they're at UPK that they wouldn't have gotten at a typical preschool. So we can pick up on um weaknesses and and need for intervention as well. So I think that's, you know, there's just a lot of different benefits to that. So our numbers for UPK, I mean, preschool students that are classified, you know, you can see that they were a little higher in eighteen and nineteen. Our groups coming in were a little bit bigger than, uh, bigger than, yes. And then there was a little bit of a drop-off, maybe related to pandemic and and some, you know, some of that going on, of course. Recently, in June of uh twenty twenty-five, our numbers are up again. The, the reason that's a little bit interesting, first of all, it's consistent right now across the region. There's a rise in preschool students with disabilities. But this is just a little concerning, and just in a sense that our numbers are so low for the group coming in for twenty twenty-five. And yet our preschool numbers, who have students with needs are, um, have increased. So it's just something to monitor. There's not a lot we can do about it, except to just be proactive and and learn about them and and be prepared. And we do, so.
Go ahead. Well, we actually don't have that much time, but still, it's interesting. So I know a little bit. So CPSC, it's, it's, the meetings are run by the school district, but the services are provided by the county. But these are all children who reside, uh, who reside in.
These are founding students, families that reside within our school district.
Right.
Right.
And, but typically, I guess, families. Well, I guess families or pediatricians, I'm just trying to think about the process for a child to even get a CPSC.
Often it starts at a preschool, where a preschool provider will say to the parent, "Hey, I'm noticing your child's struggling with speech," or something like that. And sometimes it's with a family pediatrician. But then typically, they will call us. They'll call Kim Patnella, I'll get involved. I usually have an interview with the families. I'll go out and see the children at the preschools. Because sometimes it's not an assessment, you know, sometimes it's like, let's wait and see, but sometimes it is. I'll go a little faster so we can get through some of the material. Talking about five oh fours, another thing that our PPS department does manage, our section five oh four meetings. Section five oh four, the idea is that it's not special education services, but it's supposed to level a playing field. It's supposed to be an equalizer so that people with a disability can have access to what they need, just like everybody else. We have seen a rise in the number of section five oh four plans. Part of that, I, I would suggest, is because we have been able to get some people off of IEPs and get them serviced through five oh fours, which makes sense if they don't truly need special education. Perhaps they need program and testing accommodations. Accessing to our counselor, but they don't need special education services. The other thing is that this trend is also consistent with school districts who, believe it or not, are predominantly white and who also are of higher socioeconomic status. Because some of that is that we have families that are um, they have the means, and they're also, you know, education is a priority. And there is an element of, you know, some people will go out and get private neuropsych exams, but we are definitely seeing a rise. I was reading about, I think it's, I won't name the school district, but it's in Connecticut, in Fairfield County. They're, they're dealing with, you know, thirty percent of their population is, has a five oh four plan. So um I think some of the work we did last year in getting a little tighter on how we give them, holding those annual reviews, making sure that we have reevaluation meetings every three years so we don't just automatically keep renewing five oh four plans. So it's, we just have to stay on top of it. It's an excellent tool and a needed tool for people who need it. Staffing overview, so Julie and I talked about this a little bit. This current school year, we were able to experience the addition of our nine-ten counselor, Maggie Heinsman. And it's been an incredible addition to the high school. Having two full-time school counselors in the high school has just made such a world of difference.
For students?
For social, emotional needs, but specifically around academic planning, um transition planning, all of the different things that school counselors do. They are busy twenty-four, seven. There's people lined up at their door. And so the addition of Ms. Heinsman, we look and say like, how did Ms. Kochin do it without Ms. Heinsman? But what we know is that she's now able to focus on eleventh and twelfth graders better. And Ms. Heinsman is giving those ninth and tenth graders really, really, um, you know, I think supportive services. She also was working with our rising eighth graders to support their transition to the high school. So it's been incredible. We also, for the first time this year, added point four school psychologists, so we have two full-time school psychologists. And I think that that's um a very important factor for the, like, really um better functioning of the PPS department. Because school psychologists who can hopefully do all of the different things on the national practice model for school psychology will help department run better. Ideally, I'd like to have two school, I would have both school psychologists chairing meetings, being able to help with the MTSS process, being able to offer teachers consult support. So those are two very exciting additions. We are definitely looking at defining a little more tightly the different roles. What, what should really be in the domain of the social worker? What should be really in the domain of a school counselor versus a school psychologist? And in fact, this year, our clinical team during this coming summer is going to do some curriculum work, spend some hours on defining their roles, so that we're all working to our strengths, so that we're not doubling up. But then we also, from there, want to look at maybe how we're allocating our resources. Is there enough school psych help in the high school? I would argue, no. So how do we, how do we spread our, our people out? I do think, thankfully, thanks for the board's support, that we have the right number of people and we are getting the right people on the bus. So now we just have to talk about how to use them to their, to their strengths. Anything you wanted to add? Because I know, Julia, did you want to add anything to that?
I just think one of the other things we were talking about is, you know, you tend to see based on developmental need. You know, your speech and language pathologists, your occupational therapists, your behaviorists. Developmentally, they spend more time in the elementary school, and that's appropriate. You know, where your, your guidance counselors and your, maybe your social worker, like, are spending a little bit more time in the high school, depending on the, the needs of the students. So, you know, I think it's not often that the behaviorist is up at the high school.
Yeah.
But sometimes it's required, so things we were talking about.
And then just, I won't go through all of it, but um our continuum of services has, over the last couple of years, and again, with the support of the board, we were able to expand it. We talked a little bit about the special class reading that we're able to provide. We know that we have our bridge program, both running at Garrison and at Haldane. This year, we're very excited to say, um, Ms. Jamin has been visiting some of our little potential candidates. But we've been able to open up our bridge program for some applications for students that might be a good match for our program. Our program is tiny. The bridge program started out around five or six children. A couple of those children were able to move to less restrictive. So we are, we are in a place where we were two years in. We started that Teach Town curriculum through BOSI's, and and so it was a tight, we, we got to a place where we felt comfortable. So we are now in the process of looking at some candidates, and I think we have two potentials so far, Ms. Jamin.
Two, and observing another one tomorrow. So three potential students who would then um, you know, their, their home districts need to then review whether they agree with the placement. But um those students would then um come in and attend as we would be there out of district, please.
And then um for this coming year, we, you know, based upon a need, Mark Patnella from our science department and Andrea McHugh from our special ed department got together, asked to meet with Julia and I, and basically said, hey, we have a need for co-taught and science electives. We have co-taught in the high schools in our core classes, but what about our science electives? So what we're planning on doing is starting that this coming year. And the idea would be that we would have three different electives rotating over three, three years. So each year, there'd be a different science elective, and after three years, it would start again. This way, students who needed co-taught, thi- this will help them access some of these electives. And there's many changes coming up in terms of, uh, we know we're waiting on our, the new graduation pathways. But some of those changes include things like all of our students entering high school in the year twenty twenty-seven, which is coming up soon. All of those students will now need a CTE, rare and technical credit, um, in, as part of their graduation package. So the more we can get kids into electives, the more we um build up our same program, the more we keep that in mind when we hire, or, you know, or train from within. But we need people who are CTE certified because that's part of the program. But also, it's really good for kids, and it's particularly good for our kids with disabilities. And not reflected on here too much is our MTSS, which is available to all students, whether they're classified or not. And we'll talk a little bit more about that. I'll move a little quickly now, just some of the things that I've said before helped to inform how we approached our budgeting. This year, we didn't seek to add any new positions in special education per se, um, or really do any other major changes. But we tried to continue some of the work that we've already started. And some of that work was very much tied to, as I said, um, our MTSS management system that Mr. Elder's going to talk about, as well as continuing the, um, the adopting literacy program. So our overall department budget, um, the numbers are high and they've gone up. But if you notice, the actual budget tends not to come in quite as high as what we have to budget for. I can tell you that the fairly significant jump from the twenty-three, twenty-four, sorry, twenty-four, twenty-five budgeted to what we have now is because, and this is just what happens. We have, we have two students, one who just moved here, and one student who is a little, a preschooler now, school age. And I had mentioned to the board last year that we were anticipating, um, they have complex needs and and we have to do what we have to do. So from year to year, you just don't know. But at the end of the day, and these, these numbers don't include the fact that we probably will get, hopefully, some reimbursement as we expand our bridge program. Also, Garrison is looking to expand their bridge program, and we have a tuition agreement with them so that if they get more shoulder, our cost goes down. Um, in terms of number of students out of, uh, out of district placements, we're estimating around ten for this coming year. That would have been higher if we didn't have our bridge program. We do live in an area where it's very difficult to find appropriate out-of-district placements, and and that's challenging. Because there, you know, it's, we're, we're, we're far, we're far from some of the programs. And also, there's just not that many programs out there. So that, that's an ongoing um struggle.
Just real quick, Regina, to that point, the bridge program that we had, you said there was going to be about two or three more students coming in. Ideally, is that going to cut the time that those children would have been on a bus if they had to go to another program?
The students that will hopefully be coming in are from a neighboring district.
Okay.
So I think it could be a win-win for them. I can tell you that the parents are wildly excited about this opportunity because they were given a bunch of packets to look at different schools. And when they got Halden, um, when we, and we also did something different that other schools haven't done. We went, and this was our choice, we went to the child's place of comfort and saw the child in action. And the parents were very touched by that. They're like, most people just make us come visit and, and, or, you know, so um, they, they, they were happy about that. Now we're welcoming the children here for a visit, actually this week, Thursday. Ms. Jamin's working quickly. I wanted to touch a little bit on student performance. I know that the board has asked for that in the past. And, you know, when we're talking about children with disabilities, and this is just going to be a quick overview. It's by no means a in-depth analysis of student performance. But I just wanted to kind of talk briefly about, you know, we all have high hopes and it is very important to set high expectations for all, all our students. But some students' progress is more linear than others. And I would say the, but the reality picture is, is probably more like just being human. You know, we have ups, we have downs, we have plateaus. But the important piece is to make sure that we're still moving forward, we're still making progress. But the ways that we measure success for students with disabilities is variable. And we have to really look at the whole person, and I don't mean that tongue-in-cheek. I really mean, we have to look at all of the different ways that that person is living and thriving and being and able to actualize their potential. And so it's very important that we have really talented special educators who are able to, to um do a good analysis and to write really good and strong present levels of performance, to design very specialized instruction, and to write goals that really do target the specific needs. Because having those goals that are measurable, that are really targeted, that are attainable, um, it's what it's all about. Very often, that's how we're measuring success, because some of the students are not going to do as well on a standardized test. They're just not. Maybe they can't sit through it, even if they really could perform well on it. And, and when we're working with students with disabilities, we celebrate the small successes. We celebrate all of the accomplishments. We also, our department's also accountable to the state. Our, our district is accountable to the state. We have performance indicators, and some of them we report on every year. Ms. Sniffen knows, she's been our CIO. So, you know, every year we find out information about dropout rates and graduation rates. And it's disaggregated to look at students with disabilities as well as students in gen ed. But then there's a rotating um assignment of an indicator that we have to do more in depth. So this year, we had indicator eight. That meant indicator eight, we had to assess our level of parent involvement in the CSE process. And we had to send out surveys and reset them and reset them. But we had, we're, we're looking for a certain percentage of response rate. But the idea is we're getting input from parents about how well are we working with you to support your students' needs? In previous years, we've had other indicators, sometimes indicator thirteen and fourteen. Sometimes we do great, other times we need to adjust. When we were doing indicators thirteen and fourteen, we realized we had to, we had to do better transition planning on our IEPs. So we did some training and we made some corrections. So I can foresee that that will continue. Next year, I believe it's Childfind. Childfind has to do with how we're going out there in the community and identifying children that may have disabilities, and what are we doing about it? We're getting close to our time, so um I wanted to give you a couple of snapshots. This is just a snapshot of ELA Regents exam from twenty-three, twenty-four. And um you can see, you know, hopefully in the distance, that, you know, our district really does perform well compared to the average across New York State. And that's great, and we've known that. We, we know, we've had a blue ribbon high school, we have high-performing students for the most part. But when you look at the disaggregated data, our students with disabilities on this particular exam also did really well. So we, our students with disabilities were at eighty-seven percent proficiency on this exam. So there's, there's some really good information out there for us. There's other exams though, for example, the Algebra Regents, where we only had four students take the test who had, were identified with a disability. So it, it, the end's too small for them to give us a percentage. That being said, I was looking at this data with Julia, and Julia was like, oh, those four kids. That being said, I was looking at this data with Julia and Julia was like, oh, those four kids, and she names them, she knows exactly who they are. She was all, the team was already very aware of who they are, what they needed. And actually, as she was talking to me about it, three of those four actually passed because they, they scored high enough and and there's some other, you know, structures in place, but they actually passed. So only one student actually didn't pass that Regents. You want to add anything to that, Joel? And here's an example. This one, it was our Living Environment Regents. And our students with disabilities did less well on that. We were at the sixtieth percentile for proficiency for students with disabilities. But one of the things I can say is that we were able to, this year, I had a little bit of money left over from one of our federal grants, the six-eleven grant. And in seeing the, the list of students that struggled on the Regents last year, it was pretty easy to go down the list and and I could recognize a lot of their names. I'm like, oh yes, the child was an IEP, this child was an IEP. So if we know, if we can predict going into something that this might be an area of struggle, what can we do differently? So we put our heads together and one of the allowable uses of the grant money is to provide specialized tutoring in, in the advance of the Regents. So we are now offering that. We have teachers who are willing to give up their lunchtime, they're getting paid, but they're giving up their lunchtime and other time to tutor students in advance of the Regents. And they're specifically tutoring students who are at risk of failing. And we got names from the teachers as to who might be in that pool.
I was just going to say, maybe half are classified and half aren't. Like, it's not just. So it's just teachers identifying students, us getting federal funding, putting together programming, teachers in certified areas willing to do this. And and the conversation was, well, maybe tenth period. But then the teacher's like, well, if we do a tenth period, then we're blocking out other students who might want help. So they didn't want to do a tenth period. They knew the students probably wouldn't stay from three to four. So they're like, but if we all eat and learn, and eat and learn, we can do it then. Then everybody's available and we can make it work. So we have five or six teachers that are, that are doing this. We have algebra, we have geometry, we have bio, we have earth science, and global history. So those five subject matters.
So just to clarify, the grant money can only be used for the special education teachers. But we had some other tutoring funds, which we always budget for, we were able to use because we didn't want to preclude anyone from being part of it. Another snapshot. So I'm kind of trying to give the, the group some samples of data that we look at, how we use that data to do better. And this is a sample of the eighth grade, I'm sorry, the three through eight math New York State exam. And hard to see from the distance, but you can tell that Haldane, which is to the left in the multicolored graph, Haldane does fairly robustly. Sometimes we have a blip in a particular grade. Sometimes the grade's bigger, smaller, higher number of classified students or not. But generally speaking, compared to Croton and North Salem, our, our scores are solid, pretty much grades three through eight. Looks like all, all of the group didn't do well for fifth grade math in all three schools. Kind of interesting, the red bar. But I, I, we copied and pasted this data just to look at how our students with disabilities were doing grades three through eight compared to other schools. And you can see, it kind of varies year to year. Generally speaking, if I just glanced at this, North Salem students with disabilities were doing slightly better on their grades three through eight math exam. Haldane was doing perhaps a leg up on Croton, but it varies again by grade. So once again, we're going to be keeping to look at this. We started a new math program, Eureka Squared. You know, hopefully over time, fast forward two or three years, we're hoping that we see an uptick in performance for all students. This is just one more slice, the NWEA. I, I picked this one on purpose because this, I, I took out the name. But this is because this is a student with a disability. You can see that this student's actual achievement, which is up in the top left, is still below the mean. He's at the thirty-third percentile overall. But what's important to notice here is his growth. His growth was at the ninety-ninth percentile. And that was after we implemented some support. And so, again, kind of funny, and this is what makes Haldane different and special. I was going through this presentation with Julia, preparing, and I wanted to kind of like use her as a sounding board and rehearse what I wanted to say and and the narrative I was creating. And I showed her the slide and she knew with the name redacted, which child it was. And so I was just kind of blown away and I'm like, well, yes, you're right about that. So I do hope that in the future, we can have the NWA scores disaggregated to show our students with disabilities because we still lack, and I think the MTSS program is going to help with a, a, a better longitudinal way to look at data over time. And if the two systems can speak to each other, it's going to be easier to do with NWEA. And then I'll invite Mr. Elder up. I might have to finish some other things on another day, because I know you're going to have the vote count in a moment.
Well, I have to, and I have to go close the polls in two minutes.
So I want to, I want to bring Mr. Elder up just because he spearheaded this effort to explore an MTSS system that we could use. And this team volunteered and put a tremendous amount of hours, so I will let you finish your slides and then maybe we'll end.
I'm going to follow up with you because I don't want you to rush. I want everyone else to be able to hear it and I do have to go downstairs, but that's.
Go or don't go?
Oh, 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 you.
I should go?
You should go, sorry.
You'll follow up with.
You go, I'll follow up with you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Dr. Patient. So I do think that, you know, integration of lots of different goals, one of our district goals has always been, or has been the last couple of years, of ways of using data and processes in a bunch of different ways. Particularly in program design, curriculum design, staffing, those types of things. What has become apparent over the last couple of years through the work it's been doing has really been the idea that we needed a system that would help us better organize the amount of data that we are collecting. And as Dr. Patient had said, more or less for usability for our teachers, kind of a repository and like a single place for us to look at this. As well as to better track how students are collecting over a longitudinal period of time as they, you know, go through their journey here in Haldane. This is not to say we don't have this information. I think what we have come to realize is it's living in different spreadsheets, it's living in different programs like NWA or New York State, or we're doing oral readiness influency through the Reading League at the elementary school. There's been the resurgence of the Haldane learner profile, which has just generated a tremendous amount of information that is living in all different places. And so when it comes to MTSS or having conversations around kids, what we have come to find is that that process, process is less efficient based upon just kind of a programmatic need of collecting information together in some way. So I spent some time with the individuals who are listed here, probably about ten hours or so over about three different days. And we were charged with looking at about four different programs for thinking about adoption for the school year. We went through a series of processes to go through, given the amount of time that I have. You know, a couple of things were really big was like data integration, right? To be able to speak with multiple softwares, right? To be able to pull this information in one, in one place. So that was first and foremost. What I would say that was more secondary that was also important was how the software helps our workflow and collaboration, right? So not that it's a stagnant thing, but as we analyzed these programs, are there built-in ways that helps us work better together through an MTSS process? And so those are really two of the main lenses that we looked at as we analyzed these programs and we did, you know, we did it on our own, we had the software demos through people, we had a sandbox we played with. And we had all these rubrics that we were looking at. And so what we had come to a conclusion was, we're, we're happy to report, can I advance the next slide?
Yeah.
That EduClimber was the one that was overwhelmingly favorite out of all of our teachers or the people that were on that committee. If I just can go back for a second. I think one of the things, just to say quickly, is when we started this, this wasn't just academic information, right? You'll also see up there counselors, psychologists, social workers. It's the collection of not only the academic interventions that we're doing, but it's also the concept of, you know, the social emotional supports that we're also putting in place. So it's a program that hopes to encapsulate all of that information, right? In one kind of area for our teachers to be able to look at as they're, as they're continuing to do that. So that's an important distinction to be able to make with that. One of the reasons why it's really more or less at an elementary level is we utilize PowerSchool as our student information system, which was one of the systems that we actually looked at. And we were hoping that PowerSchool would make this really robust, well enough program that we would like because it's our student information system. It, it didn't rise to the level that we were really looking at, which is unfortunate in other ways. But our elementary teachers, and I say this softly, they don't really into access the student information system that a secondary teacher would do, right? They have their kids for the whole day, they have their attendance, everything that they really have is right there. Something like an EduClimber that we have will create a platform really for those teachers that houses a lot of this information in one area. So we're really cautious to making sure particularly at the secondary level doesn't supplant our student information system. Or we feel like our secondary teachers have multiple systems to be looking into. And we're ready to look at as we move forward. But I think one of the things I just wanted to say is that this is an all-encompassing process for both academic as well as social emotional supports we put in for students. And so EduClimber is the one that we have recommended and that we're looking forward to moving forward with. Budget dependent, of course, and working with Catherine Platt. And so the idea of next steps after tonight would be obviously starting to onboard some of the information that we need to move forward with this and set up the training processes that are being needed to have this be a go for September. And then also working with this team to kind of create a multi-year implementation. It's vast. There's a lot of stuff there. And the ideas around ours jump in one, one simple idea, but ways that we can kind of maneuver into this work from a very systematic, logical, professional level standpoint as we go forward. That's mine.
I have like one or two more things, but should I just hold off and maybe I'm lacking on June third?
I don't see Peggy here, so you may come up and speak. I'll speak. I think we'd be. Yeah. Peggy can always go in large.
Thank you, Mr. Elder. I think it's always important for the board to know that you're getting a good bang for your buck. And the board was encouraged to and did approve the hiring of a second ENL teacher. And I can't say enough about Ms. Bellizzardo. Barbara Jennings, first of all, is an absolute, yeah, she is one of the best teachers here in the entire district and there's a lot of good teachers. She goes above and beyond. She wanted me to emphasize that some of the work she values the most is not just teaching the kids in the classroom, but getting to know their families, because you work so intimately with the families when they're coming in and they don't speak the language. She helps them from every step, from when they first try to register to, to getting their children involved and learning about activities. And she really gets to know them and also gets the benefit of working with them through the years. Actually, Mr. Albano had brought up the idea of looping and how beneficial that is, that that study showed. So our ENL teachers in a way do that. I'm just going to pause for a minute. Did you need me to wrap it?
No, 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 it's been taking a while to count the votes, so.
Okay, perfect, perfect. So Ms. Jennings was able to share with me some of the professional learning that both she and Ms. Bellizzardo engaged in. She spoke so highly, first of all, of their partnership, how much she's already learned from Ms. Bellizzardo and vice versa. And also that she's been able to do a little bit, what she said, a more targeted focus on her high school students because she's able to spread out some of the work. Before, we really did not have proper coverage. We really didn't. And this has really helped us to really meet the needs of our students. So there's a few different samples of some of the professional learning that they engaged in. When we think about our changing population, I was able to pull some numbers from basically ten years ago, from 2014 and compare it to 2024, just from the state data. But you can see here in this picture that the Haldane School District was and still is predominantly white. But in 2014, it was eighty-seven percent. Now those numbers are eighty percent. So that means twenty percent of our children are coming from more diverse backgrounds. And again, that's, that's something to, to, to be proud of and to celebrate and something that enriches our community. This year alone, it was interesting because they had seven new students join the program. So between September and December, four students came in and three of them were at the elementary level. So the teachers just have to pivot. They, they give the assessments, they determine how many number of minutes children's or children are required. And then from January until now, we have three more students enroll. So seven alone, just in this one school year. And because they had the two of them, they were able to do it. I just did a quick snapshot of some of the units of study and staffing requirements for ENL. This is the K through eight one. But it basically shows that depending on the child's level of language proficiency, that dictates the number of minutes of service that they are required to receive. So it really adds up fast when you have children who speak different languages and to be able to support them. And I think Haldane's doing a really good job at supporting them, but it's even better now that we have the two teachers. It also really dovetails nicely with the work that we were doing with our Hudson Valley Auburn, but also with our Universal Design for Learning. And that connects to the New York State's framework, which has to do with having a culturally responsive and sustaining framework. And I think that that's something that as a district, we can and should be delving into even more going forward. And it, and it does fit nicely with the work of our, that our community wants us to do, that our community that's, you know, looking for us to have a more inclusive and supportive and welcoming environment. So I look forward to like that continued work here in the district. Because I think it's going to make it better for everyone when we make it more more culturally responsive and celebrate who each of us is. And that's really all I had. So if anyone has any additional questions or anything they'd like to know more about?
I mean, just real quick, you know, la- last time we talked about the successful, your guys' ways to kind of really gauge the success of interventions. And I think you hit on that. And it looks like you're, you know, through this next program, EduClimber, you're going to be kind of analyzing each one of those interventions. It also looks like what you've kind of put out is there, there's two basic advantages. There's number one, the advantage of the interventions of which you're doing. But then also the advantage that we have such a small school. So the fact that, you know, Julia knows a kid just by the data plot. The that speaks to me that not only are you looking at, you know, each type of intervention that you're doing, evaluating that through multiple means, but then also looking at the whole child through that process and kind of evaluating all these different. Not just interventions, but kind of just different characteristics of which you're looking at. And it, it's, it sounds like that's in, you know, kind of what we had asked about, right? Like, we said, how, how are you, how are you showing this? How are you proving that? Like you said, the bang for the buck. How do you make sure that we're doing this? And it sounds that you have gone back through this entire process, looking at those interventions, finding out how they function and have a plan in place to even, you know, kind of organize it a little bit better, right? So I'd say this is, this is fantastic. And again, it's the advantage of a small space.
And the disadvantage of small, though, sometimes is that we all do so many jobs that I think finding enough time to have those data conversations to zoom out, because, you know, our principals are running around doing everything in the building, there's no assistant principal. So finding that time and prioritizing that time to, to have the look from the balcony is, is essential. And, you know, I wish there was more time in the day. Thank you all. Thanks for the support. I think we're starting to see, I think, some of the fruits of the labor and some of the investments you've put in are, are starting to really show.
Well, I have a question, but I want to say, I was, that was a huge amount of work. It's a bittersweet presentation because it's your last. But it really shows all the work that you've done and it is a really so, I thought it was, you know, it was, it was really a great way to, to, to wrap this up. So thank you so much.
Very.
There, there is, there is one, but you know, since, you know, you did make a good point. Where do you see kind of, you know, now that you have the advantage of leaving, right?
That's the way I word it.
Well, it provides good perspective. So you've seen your tenure come in here, you, you have, you, you saw kind of needs that, that you, I think, addressed. And going forward, where do you see some of those, especially in the presentation? You, you noted definitely at the pre-K level, you know, kind of services popping up. Where do you see our role and, and what can we, should be, be jumping on early for next year and into the following year? Where do you see this projected at?
Well, I think to your point, you know, the district's going through a lot of transitions. We're going to be welcoming, or I've already started to welcome Dr. Gail Duffy and and yes, and, and Erin Paquette is going to be the new director. So on June 10th, actually, Ms. Duffy is going to join us for our administrative council meeting and sit with us and just watch one of our AC meetings in the session. And then at 10 o'clock, when the meeting's over, we welcome, we're welcoming this pet in and our new, one of our new school psychologists to come in. We welcome, we're welcoming this pet in and our new, one of our new school psychologists to come and meet the administrative team and then speak. So just to kind of make sure that we have a really good transition so that some of the work that's been going on, and the work's been going on way before I got here. But um, just so that we we move some of the district goals and district work forward and don't lose all sorts of time with the handing over. So I've actually, and again, part, part of it was the audit, but I've made a really um concerted effort to log. Um, to almost make like a special education manual of sorts. Um, I've done things like making sure that the role of the. Um, case manager is defined. We didn't have that defined before. Just things like that are now like stored, making sure that we have it stored. How do we decide if a student should be um ineligible for or, you know, the the um world language requirement should be waived? What what rubrics are we using? Just trying to get some things um in place. So I think that will help. Um, to your point, I think that the work from the the audit will still carry on and um. The my fellow administrators, it's really, it's all our work and that's how we did it. And I think that's the only way it's gonna move forward. But I think as we embark on, some of my suggestions would be as we embark on this M T S S and and Mr. Eller's all over this, he knows it. Um, as we start with new software, new software is only gonna take us so far. It's gonna be, you know, what data do we input? What will we get out of it? But then what are we doing with it? So I do think this would be a good opportunity for us to refresh our faculty and staff's approach toward response to intervention and M T S S. And what does a classroom intervention look like? What, you know, what is tier one and tier two? What data should I come with when I come to my student support team meeting? And 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 who says, no, you can't come to the S S T because you have no data? Get the, get baseline data, do some intervention, and then talk to us about whether that you need help beyond that. So I think we need to tighten that up. Um, all schools do. I think, uh, I think Josh was saying when he went to his curriculum. Yeah, we do M T S S and every single person in the next breath said, and we need to do it better. So um, I think that that's something that would be good work for us to continue engaging in, but we're already moving the needle on that. Um. I, I don't know if we can possibly carve out time for data teams, more data teams, more meetings with looking at data. I think that would be really vital. Um, and then I guess the other work is around, in my mind, especially with special education, the C T E piece. I think um, they're starting to look at getting work-based learning, starting in ninth grade. Making sure that some of those hours, you you're volunteer, you're in town, you're doing an internship, like those are work-based learning hours that we could start to log. So, you know, maybe in the future as our.
Hour retracting.
Exactly.
Bank him as, bank him as easily as we can, you know.
Yeah, and um, I also just think it will open doors for kids as they start to get exposed to more work-based learning opportunities earlier. So as we have declining enrollments, and we've talked about this, it might be an opportunity. So maybe I have a faculty member that has point four, point two of their day available. Perhaps they could be a transition specialist that works with students on internship opportunities, work-based learning hours, that, you know. Takes them to transition fairs and learns about about jobs and careers. Because our, our, right now, our special education teachers are fully booked. Who's doing that? Who's keeping track of that? Some bigger districts do have transition specialists or transitioning foreigners. They also have M T S S foreigners. So again, as our, and as our enrollment goes down, those might be good investments of our extra F T A, F T E. That'll, that'll benefit everybody. Some thoughts.
I mean, that's something I really think about, like, that, that, though. There's been talk in the district, both from the board and from the administrative team, who's doing all the work and the teachers on becoming more. Data literate and using data, but it does take time. I mean, and that is something, you know, that could certainly be built into. You know, a schedule for how to take, again, maybe another example of somebody who doesn't have. You know, is, you know, has some extra room in their schedule and that person like comes up with, I don't know.
A data coach, like, and they, and they.
Yeah, because people sitting with their own data is. Just somebody to cover, you need somebody to cover the classes to give, well, how do we give, I guess where I was going is, how do we give, what, what's the best way to give teachers the time?
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Um. So now at the opportunity, there's opportunity for communication from the public. Um, the Haldane Board of Education desires and values inputs from the entire school community. This first. Public presentation is reserved for comments on special presentations and active agenda items. For those who wish to address the board, we'd ask you to sign in, state your name for the record, keep your comments three minutes or less. And um, avoid disparaging remarks or discussion of what's now. So next we have on our agenda, our very valuable administrator information reports. So much happening. My calendar's getting old. Um, all right, so um, next we have on committee minutes, our committee. Our policy committee's been working hard. Is there anything you want to say other than the foods? Yeah, I think. Well, please, we have on.
You know, we focus on New York's really pushing these um, these three, what they call student-centered policies um to be implemented for the fall. So that's kind of what we've. What we were looking at. We'll talk about, looks like one.
So moving into consent agenda, um. Minutes, may I have a motion, please?
So moved, second.
All in favor? Consent agenda financial, maybe a motion, please?
Removed, second.
Um. All in favor? Uh, consent agenda personnel, motion please.
So moved, second.
And I don't think there's anything, no, there are. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Um, the unfinished business last time was briefly about the. School board meeting scheduled for twenty five, twenty six. Carl, when we spoke to Gail, Gail's on board with us scheduling initially. One meeting in November and one meeting in December. And so um. If everybody's okay with that, we'll move forward with the idea that as as always, we can always. So may we have the recommended action, please?
We resolve that upon the recommendation of the interim superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. Board meeting schedule as attached.
Can we have a motion, please?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, next, for new business, the first thing on the agenda is the C S C C P S E recommendations. May we have the recommended action, please?
We resolve that upon the recommendation of the interim superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the recommendations of the committees on special education. And preschool special education as presented.
May we have a motion, please?
So moved, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Um, and next, um. That's fine. Um, next we have our um. Uh, uh, basically just approving our photography agreements for next year, doing it. Um, keeping Christine Ashburn's done a nice job and and sort of having the second. So I guess we first have the um. Recommended action for the elementary, middle school photography agreement for twenty five, twenty six.
We resolve that upon the recommendation of the interim superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves agreement with Christine Ashburn Photography. Hudson Valley School Photography for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school year to include elementary and middle school student portraits. Candid photography, extracurricular, extracurricular photography, and additional photography support as detailed in the task agreement. And authorizes the interim superintendent to sign the agreement on behalf of the district.
May we have a motion, please?
So moved, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the approval of the high school photography agreement for twenty five, twenty six.
We resolve that upon the recommendation of the interim superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the agreement with light touch photography. For the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school year to include high school student portraits, candid photography, extracurricular and athletic photography. And additional photography support as detailed in the task agreement and authorizes the interim superintendent to sign the agreement on behalf of the district.
May we have a motion, please?
So moved, second.
Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so the policy review, the first readings, I left.
Um, yeah, so we just wanted to be, the policy committee would, just wanted to hear everybody's feedback on um policy twelve, ten. Um, which is requiring school boards to adopt um, to adopt it by July first. Um, and we're required to appoint an ex officio student board member. Um, so somebody from the student body to sit on our board. Um, and essentially, we're just looking for process. That's all we really need to put in by July first. We can, you know, talk about details later. But um, I reached out or included Julie on the email because obviously I think we want her to tell us what to do, like, uh, what would make the more sense.
Provide suggestions, right?
Just for that, yeah. Uh, so yeah, I don't know if anyone, you know, business, I, I attended a, a online training about it. Um, just to hear, I mean, they, they lay out a bunch of ways that other school districts are doing it. It's really all over the map. Um, you know, it could be elected by the student body, it could be elected by the the principal, the superintendent. Um, so it's sort of however much involvement that we really want. Um, you know, it might be worth thinking of meeting the people before they're approved. Um, we don't have to do that, so.
When I was talking to Maggie about it, so the one thing, so when I think back to when we had an ex officio member before. Those students, they show, they came to the meeting, but I realize in retrospect, like, we didn't. Really create a structure or scaffold to really engage their input. And it was a lot to ask them to be younger in school, very busy, and then to come to these meetings and wait. And so the policy to me is fine and I'm happy with the process. I mean, I'm pretty open to what the process is for selecting them, but I'd really like to think about is how we can. Oh, actually, I didn't finish. So they used to just come and be kind of put on the spot.
Right.
Now we have students come and they give these really lovely reports, but like, that's again, like, it's putting this burden on them to write something and report on something. And I always love their reports and I love them coming, but it's often also things that we're hearing at other venues as well. It's great to hear that from students. But we're, but it's not giving us their input, like, the whole purpose of the ex officio student board member is to get student perspective. And so I'm, you know, maybe it's something, I guess we'd have to talk about it in an open meeting. But maybe just something for us to think about, and it could be a role that a board member needs to take on, right, to. You know, I don't know if it's to meet with them before a meeting, I don't know. You know, it, I also feel like we want to avoid having one student's opinion, right? And so does it need to be someone who has a chance to go and like, is it someone from the student council? I don't, I just, I think there's a way to do this. In a really thoughtful way, that really gets what we're supposed to be getting from having student members.
Yeah, I think I, from my viewpoint as an educator, it's a really good educational moment for the child and for us, right? So um, they're able to teach us about certain things and then. By them being on the board, it's a really good educational moment for them, right? So um, I I would love for that, uh, our structure to reflect something that provides benefit to the child. Um, opposed to just sitting, you know, sitting in a meeting.
Right, I want to bring them on the spot for something.
Yeah, which, which I think is. I do have one question, and i- is it, I thought it could be a rotating.
Apparently that's not the case.
That not the case, you know?
There is no set number, um, and many schools have two or three, um, so they do, but the idea is that it's somebody to a degree somewhat regular. So, you know, they're involved and they're, they're coming back and forth, so it's not just a, a rotation of sorts. But no, there are, and it sort of depends on who we have, if there's more than, and yeah, more than one student interested.
Yeah.
It can be.
Yeah, so it can be a few, but not uh, ten. Meaning, right, not one, not, not one per month or something, okay?
One regular and a sub, like an alternate, or they could maybe rotate, you know, they take it separate, you know?
Yeah.
Every other meeting kind of thing.
Yeah.
It's tricky thing because one of the reasons why it didn't work when we had a single member is the students became so busy. And then they just.
Because it pools, because it pools from the same pool of children who are busy.
Right.
That's the issue.
Right. Well, and, but I also felt like. Anyway, I, I mean, I could see it, it was like one more thing that they had to do, which was one of the reasons why. I don't know, like, maybe, I don't know, like, maybe the president and the vice president have their agenda meeting. So that ends right at lunchtime and the board buys the kid lunch and we talk to them about what's gonna be on the jet. I don't know. I mean, that's to me. The, the, and I think it's something we need, we have until the fall to appoint them. I think it's just something that we want to think about.
There's a, there's a pat, there's kind of like a new philosophy in the way that uh student councils run. Um, is that they are, are not elected. Um, what happens is. When you go out for elections, especially with. Um, it, it, it tends to be uh the same students over and over again. And it prioritizes um. If you're thinking about trying to educate as many children as possible and provide an opportunity to children. Um, you, by holding elections, you're actually like specifically ignoring. The vast majority of the children uh and their opinions. So, you know, it's only the people that raise their hand and step up. And um, so. I I add that as just some perspective that there, there is a push just in general in student councils to try to. Try to avoid like classroom elections and things like that and have, uh, that's why I mentioned, like, rolling appointments. So that you have um, you know, an opportunity for a kid that almost would, ne- number one, never win an election. Number two, never run for an, like, never even think about doing it, but has an opportunity to provide um valuable input.
Yeah.
So, you know, I just put that out there if that's something that, you know, to consider or for Julie to consider. Um, because uh, you, you know, the last thing. We, yeah, I think we'll leave it there. I'll leave it at that.
So, yes, I can read, but but Julie had, had recommended and we can um, you know, talk about that. She had suggested a student council representative who's either junior or senior. Um, and then, you know, some type of form of process and she and the superintendent meet with them. They talk about it, um, and then make the recommendation to the board. You know, that's one option. We could also extend that another step and meet with the students. We could, some other schools use a, a written statement, you know, so it's almost like they apply. So.
I like an application process. I a- agreed um that I, I, I think. I would prefer to not have it be an election or somebody who's already in student council because those are the kids who are already super involved. I would also love to hear some potential nominations from administrators, you know, maybe they could, you know, target a couple of kids who they think would be potential. Excellent candidates for a role like this, who maybe they could approach, or maybe a teacher that they're close with could approach them. And kind of encourage them to put in this application. Um, because I really do think this could be an excellent opportunity. For a kid who maybe isn't otherwise super involved, who will A, have some more time, right? But also would really um benefit from an experience like this, somebody who's interested in what we're doing.
So I've been writing, I've been writing the recommendations for my students, right? Who have been, you know, where I work, it's an application process. The board sent out application process, you know, with the deadline, you know, give a certain resume, fill this out, you need three recommendations, right? And I've been helping out those students and one of the nice things is um, some of the students. That applied and, you know, and asked for, you know, my recommendation. Um, are, are chi- are children that would never raise their hand for a, for an election, right? So um, and because they just, they just know that's like not gonna be a thing. And um, and, and, and would be strong people for their board, you know, would be good.
I was just gonna say, I think we've done it many different ways. What I sent you was how we did it with Bill, I think, when we had the last. Who I think was.
It was looped, yeah, it was looped.
Um, but we also did it like when it was May McGrath, we had reached out to the social studies department. Fifty of those students involved in policy, or like, they felt like this might be something they would be interested in doing. And the social studies department gave us a few names of students that might not have been in student council, but. And May McGrath now works in Washington DC. I think she works on policy. Um, so, and I think when it was Andrew Nuchampkin, I think it was student council, like, so it's, it's taken different forms. Over the. Like, so it's, it's taken different forms over the many years that we've, we've done this. So, I really, I hear what you're saying and, and I, I do think there may be students who have a really strong desire to, you know, engage at a different level within the community, within the school, that might not be the student council kid.
Yeah.
Um, and so I, I, I do agree and I do, I do like that. I do think we tap the same students often a lot of times, and even if it isn't a student council student, there's still kids, most of our kids are tapped for multiple things, so I do think having a backup or having two is not a bad idea.
Yeah.
Um, you know, you don't want to eliminate an athlete during the fall and then a play day student during the playtime of year. And so having two, I think is quite a good idea. And, and I do think I do think juniors and seniors.
That does make sense.
I think in a better spot. And there may be some sophomores who may be completely ready for something like this. I would never say no, but I just I think to think about the age or the grade level.
Yeah, um, and you would be our facilitator then, you're.
If you would like, I will do whatever.
Yeah, but I do, I mean, do you agree the idea that there needs someone from the board to sit down with students periodically? Like, I just, to ask them to like, look at the.
No, 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 I was gonna say that I feel like it, it's sort of incumbent upon us to
It is, yeah.
Structure this experience in a meaningful way. It's not merely come and sit around the board, it's, we have to decide for ourselves what key responsibilities we feel like it would be great to have their input on, if, you know, what kinds of committees, board committees in which there might be opportunities for them to sit in on, should they choose, like, you know, those are the kinds of things that I think might be meaningful and actually useful to us, um, as opposed to, you know, in the past where wonderfully they arrive on the day of the board meeting and report and hear what we have to say, but, you know, outside of that, you know, we really didn't engage them in any meaningful way about what governance.
There's, there's part of me that doesn't want to hold them responsible for having to write reports, because that's like, that's just work, but like, you could imagine that, we could think about it. I would really like for them to like, meet with somebody around the budget and around, like, when we have policies on. You know, or me, I mean, I don't know what the right set of things, but definitely around the budget.
Yeah.
You know, oh, the capital project, like, like, if, like, and even if they came, you know, I don't know. Like, maybe they only come to workshop meetings, or maybe they only come to, right, like, figure out a way to make it more feasible, but I, anyway, when, when you get it.
Yeah, and we have time for all that, and we also have time, we don't have to appoint them now, it doesn't have to be over the summer, we decide the terms of offers, you know, so just, just the process in, in, in place. Yeah, so, so I guess what I'm hearing is that we'll, um, hopefully the nominations or the suggestions will come from Julia and then we'll come up with some type of application process, it sounds.
Sounds good.
And then the policy committee, so we can take another crack at maybe coming up with some language around that and present it for a second reading, does that sound good?
Yeah.
Yep, thank you.
Was there anything we wanted to say about the Max temp one? Sounds like the school is on it.
Yes, yeah, that, and then this for, um, obviously the policy isn't, isn't in bedrock, it's, it's it has to be implemented, I think by September first, that one. Um, but it's totally dependent on the school and rooms and, and building by building, rooms by rooms, so we, we've already been doing that, the work with our facilities department in terms of, um, how, how they mitigate hot rooms, right, and moving people around. So I think this is, we were waiting for maybe a little bit more, the policy committee was waiting for more information from, you know, having them put the things together, but just in terms of how things are measured, temperature measured in the classrooms, and there's two different temperatures eighty two versus eighty eight, um. So yes, I, I don't know if anyone took a read that has any questions about that.
Yeah, well, the lower numbers, you have to have, you have to begin to mitigate.
Begin to mitigate.
And eighty, you gotta, you have to.
We've already been doing that before, you know, they asked, asked for the, for the policy and stuff, so that will be, we'll, we're heavily relying on our facilities department for their procedures and that and, um, did I miss anything?
No, no, I, I think you're in a good place. I, I think Adam deserves, um, a lot of credit, him, him and the facilities department. They, they, they really worked hard, starting over the April break, and they've implemented, I'd want to say at least about twenty, eighteen to twenty extra window units, portable units. Uh, we already had some in place, but we've added to that. And now we have uh, money in the budget, so going into next year, that, that process will continue. And right now we're feeling very comfortable that, for example, in June, if we, we do have some very hot days and, and humid. Um, that we at least have enough air conditioned space where we would not need to cancel school or do an early release. There was a power outage, all bets are off, um, but again, right now, we, we may have to double up some classes or bring two or three classes to the library here or the gymatorium. Um, but we, we think we can make do and you'll even be in a better place next year, so I don't see an issue, the policy is required. But in going forward with it, I, I do believe we can comply with it and keep classes moving along in instruction.
I guess when the units have become, this is a question for Adam, so like a long time ago, we were talking about putting window within and there was the concern about the electricity, but I guess maybe the units have become more efficient, they're not so.
Yeah, I, I, as far as electricity means, I think if you were to design an, an air conditioner for the space, you would be looking at something that might be two twenty volts instead of a one ten volt, so that said, um, we're really putting in units that are going to keep us in, in compliance, but maybe not make it an ideal.
Yeah, yeah, right, right. Like reduce the humidity a bit, keep it maybe around eighty, seventy, not. Which is better, I mean, it's not great, but it's, yeah.
Yeah, and I think when designing it, you would design it on an extreme situation with, when they, when they do the measurements for that would be you know, the heat of the summer, which really isn't necessarily something that we need to take into consideration since we're not talking about air conditioning in space in July and August, we're talking about air conditioning in space in June or September. So those calculations can be taken down a notch, I imagine, to try to just keep us in a comfortable level for those temperature that, that time of the year.
Alright, great, thanks to the policy committee, thanks to Maggie for going to a workshop on these, being able.
Thank you.
Put it in and the policy committee to bring these before us, and so. Alright, so at this point, we're just waiting for the. Now we wait to result, so actually, I'm just gonna, just typing though, chat to Josh about this, I was just listening. A recess, but like.
Can I just, really quick, I just, I think I'd be remiss, um, the resignation of the teaching assistant, Diana Balbo.
Yes.
She is going to get her master, um, as a school psychologist. And she's been with us for two years as a teaching assistant at the high school, and she's phenomenal. Um, she's definitely gonna be missed, um, big shoes to fill. And you all know, we had Chris Rovino for many, many years, who was able to reteach every subject matter, was able to spackle the information from algebra one to chemistry to trigonometry, you know, and, and John has really stepped in and done a great job, um, with our students, so we wish for the best. Um, but it is definitely a sad resignation for us. Um, she's been tremendous and the kids really responded to her, um, she's been a great child, so.
That's really exciting. I saw her letter and I didn't know that, that is, that's really fantastic.
Yeah, proud of her, but sad.
Alright, so, oh. Yes, I'm going to start to go into recess, have a second.
Yeah, second.
All those in favor?
Thank you.
You're about to empty out the software.
Do I have to stop the recording for the recess?
Oh, right.
Or pause it?
Probably a good idea. Probably, yeah, yep. Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Alright, so here we are, um, for the last, uh, topic on our agenda, which is to get the results of our vote. Following are the results of the annual district meeting of May twenty, twenty twenty five. Proposition one, school budget passed with four hundred and seventy four yes votes and one hundred and twenty five no votes. Proposition two, school bus passed with four hundred and seventy six yes votes and one hundred and twenty no votes. Proposition three, capital reserve fund amendment passed with four hundred and eighty yes votes and one hundred and seventeen no votes. In the trustee election, Ezra Clemmenson received three hundred and eighty one votes, Sean McNally received four hundred and sixty four votes. The total number of write-in votes was twenty one. Therefore Ezra Clemmenson and Sean McNally will assume the open trustee positions on the Howling Board of Education commencing July first, twenty twenty five. And proposition four, Butterfield Library passed with five hundred and eight yes votes and eighty six no votes. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Alright, so the second opportunity for communication. Alright.
Board reflections? I have, do I have to, um, oh, oh, yeah, we do, yes, we have to do the, um.
Yeah, that's right, yes, thanks. Uh, so maybe we have a motion to accept the results of the annual district meeting.
So moved.
All those in favor, oh, sorry. Alright, we need recommended action first.
Be resolved that upon the recommendation of the interim superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby accepts the results of the annual district meeting budget vote and trustee vote for Tuesday, May twentieth, twenty twenty five. With proposition one passing, four hundred and seventy four yes votes. With proposition three passing with four hundred and seventy six yes votes. With proposition three passing with four hundred and eighty yes votes. Um, and with our two board members, and Sean McNally, both elected to to two, three year terms expiring on June thirtieth, twenty twenty eight. Um, and then, yes, with the proposition for the Butterfield Library also passed, um, with five hundred and eight yes votes.
So now may I have a motion, please?
So moved, second.
Um, all those in favor? Any opposed? Alright, now communication for the public, thank you for seeing that, Meg. We have accepted the, the, um. The result of the election and the communication from the public, alright, board reflections?
Thank you to everybody that donated and worked on the, uh, election, we really appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
And huge thanks to Carl and Catherine and to Megan and to the whole administrative team to getting us to this place and to running the election. Super appreciated.
Thank you, Maggie, for stepping in as pro temp.
Work this evening.
Thank you to the community.
Yeah.
The support, support and, and a very, uh, very good voter turnout, which I think is a good, high engagement.
Thanks very much for the voters for coming, absolutely, um. I move to during the meeting, they have a second? All those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you.